Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 12, 2025. The time is 7:04. This is the Town of Groton representative town meeting for November. I'll turn it over to the town clerk for the roll call, please.
Okay, Representative Adams.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Casper.
Here.
Din Shinbra.
Here.
Dutton.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Fritchy.
Are you here? Okay. He's here.
Fox.
Here.
Frickman.
Here.
Garner A.
Here.
Garner M.
Here.
Gibbs. Hume.
Here.
Johansson.
Here.
Kayden.
Here.
Linder. Luck. Massett.
Here.
Matter.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Aubrey.
Here.
Perella. Powers K. Powers S. Pulaski.
Here.
Omritz. V.C. Williams. Watson.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
And moderator Umble.
I am here.
Twenty-three.
All right, so we have 23 members present. I'll declare a quorum. Move this item to Agenda Item B, Moment of Silence, and salute the flag. Before we do our salute to the flag, I just wanted to recognize that we lost one of our members over the past month. RTM member in District 3 Archie Swindell passed away on November 2, 2025, and I'll be dedicating this moment of silence to him and his family in this time. Okay, so if we can just, a moment of silence, salute to the flag. I'll lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right, inside your packet you have the minutes from our last meeting from October 8, 2025. Unless there are any additions, deletions, and revisions, we'll move these as presented. So if the body has anything that they'd like to add, change, or take away, now is the time. Going once, going twice, going thrice. They are approved, thank you very much. All right, public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited in no more than five minutes or less, as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the Town of Groton. The moderator and members through the moderator shall answer questions only in order to clarify speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record, and if you wish to speak virtually, please register by emailing council@groton-ct.gov no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. But we don't have anybody online. And do we have anybody signed up? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir, if you could just come on up to the podium and state your name and address
Hello, my name is Mitchell Shinbra. I live at 116 Dartmouth Drive in Mystic, Connecticut. I just wanted to say, all you people are volunteers, everybody here, and I think you have a tough job to do, and I think you put up with a lot of crap. I want to say thank you for your service. That's it.
It's our pleasure to serve this wonderful community. Speaking for myself, of course, but I can say that there's consensus on that, folks, or else we wouldn't be here. All right. Okay, any other public petitions? All right, moving on. Receipt of communications, I was informed that Representative Powers S and Powers K would not be available this evening. Also, I received communication that Town Manager Bert is going to be unavailable because they had switched their Town Council Committee of the Whole to tonight, so he is, he's there. I also wanted to bring up congratulations to all that are in this room who have served on the RTM and might be, this is their last meeting, as well as our newly elected officials in the town and the city. I represent District 2, so I got to keep them in the mix as well. And on the note of Representative Swindell, I just wanted to announce that there are going to be, there's going to be a memorial service on November 15 from 3:00 to 6:00 at Groton Congregational Church in the Dutton Hall, what we call is like a little fellowship center, so you can come on in, pay your respects, grab a bite to eat, share a story. One of the cool things about Mr. Swindell is that he was one of the few members of the Town of Groton that served on all three elected bodies. He was on the Board of Ed, he was on the Town Council, as well as coming back to the RTM here, and he'll be greatly missed. One of Groton's finest. We also, I'm going to move on to, unless there's other communications from the group, I'm going to move on. Okay, so Town Manager is not here, but he did send us a report through our emails. If you have any questions, just please forward any of those questions to Town Manager Bert or myself, and I'll relay the message that you had questions. And then economic development is going to be upcoming in the future term, starting December 10. So if you are a member, in one election, you'll be back here December 10 to do it all over again. All right? And I'm going to turn it over to Agenda Item H, which, Report from the Superintendent of Schools. We have Superintendent Austin here this evening to give us an update on the schools. I believe she gave us a packet over there, too, so.
A few.
Yeah, a few packets.
And I'm going to have Ben Moon join me. He's our STEM Coordinator for elementary, but actually kind of sees the STEM and the career pathways, K through 12. So I'm excited to come to you again tonight. What you see out there are career pathways at Robert E. Fitch, and also a new pathway, it's actually a resurrected pathway, but I've added robotics to it. We're calling it Dream. It's going to be a field of dreams, so it's the Department of Robotics, Engineering, Architecture, and Manufacturing, because we are in this beautiful southeastern Connecticut, a hub of opportunity for our kids, and we want them to take advantage. I was speaking with a few people before the meeting, saying, you know, it's all, I've been 45 years as an educator, and so, you know, you can say some things after 45 years, but I've seen the pendulum swing, and it's always been about college and career, but ultimately, it's the career. And I feel like my responsibility as the educator K-12, pre-K-12, is to help kids find their way. What are they good at? What do they love to do? I call it, they find their passions and their proclivities, just because I like the words. And when they do that, they'll be like me, 45 years in and you're not ready to go because you've got too many things to do. So if everybody could find their element in their career, that's really ultimately. And how we get there, and the education that we need, that coexists with that, you know, that all jives to make you really, really the best you can be in your career. So I just can't be more excited for our students here in Groton and the opportunities that they have. Now, we have a vision of the graduate, from the time they're in till they graduate, and it's falcons rise, don't you just love that? They soar, they rise, they rise, they soar, but it's about being resilient individuals, innovative learners, socially aware citizens, and engaged communicators. And you can see that in a pre-K classroom, you can see that in an elementary classroom, you can see that in middle school and in high school. We just did a academic walkthrough. I'm in schools every day, I have seven of them, so I don't miss one, you know, and every week, I'm in like all of them. And Ben and I were at the high school, and we always look in the classroom and say, who's doing the work? Now, it's going to be a combination. Teacher's going to be doing some of the instruction, and then the kids are really doing some of the debating and discussion, and, you know, getting online, and looking in a book, and reading and writing. You want to see all those happening, because they have an 84-minute block, so they have time that they can take on a lot of responsibility in their own learning. And when kids take on responsibility in their own learning, it sticks. You know, you don't want them just sit back and be a sponge, because that doesn't always sink in. So, do I need a clicker? Oh, I got the clicker. So, I don't know why that's up there, but it's kind of in the way. I don't know if we're on the... That's fine. So, one of the things that have happened this year is the implementation of a new Groton Public School strategic plan. When I first got here in 2014 with Dr. Brineer, we created a strategic plan. We revamped it kind of midway through, but it was really time to have a real change, so we brought a lot of people together. And this is really board-approved, and, you know, the board is with the district and the teachers on this, but we need to accelerate academic learning and achievement, especially after COVID, cultivate a rich and vibrant learning community. We've built three schools in Groton. This community has come together to help us build these wonderful facilities, strengthen pathways that develop secondary readiness, so this is that whole career pathway theme, and attract and grow a skilled and supported workforce, and also improve operational efforts and increase fiscal responsibility, which we really are pleased to say, we are working really hard to do that. Is it not moving?
Yeah, it's not doing it.
I love technology, don't you? When it works. You want me to? Oh. Oh, there we go. I think that's next. I just clicked it. So, I talked to Beverly Washington, my chair, thank goodness for my chair, she's fabulous, and she actually had another obligation, but we talked about things to talk to you about, and she says, Susan, don't always give them the good news. So I said, I'll talk about successes and challenges, because actually, there's some challenges in my job. I look at the bright side of a lot of things, and I see a lot of successes, but there are challenges, too. So back to the successes. One of the things we've got to campaign, because attendance has been on a lull with COVID. Kids were still getting sick, there have been mental health issues, there have been, you know, lots of things that have prevented some kids from getting to school, but we have outstanding teachers and administrators that are really doing outreach and trying to get kids connected and belonging in school. And sometimes it's the courses during the day, but sometimes it's the robotics class, or the band, or other things that bring kids back, athletics. So, we have this campaign, and you might have seen it on the Fitch, you know, board when you go by. School is better with you, and we focus on belonging and school attendance. We have ongoing curriculum development, we focus on this Connecticut Core Standards, reading, writing, arithmetic is still really important, high-quality teaching and learning. We focus on how engaged are the kids? Are they really learning? You know, building thinking classrooms, and some project-based learning, which Ben will tell you more about, which really hands-on, minds-on, they really get into. And then professional development, always, for our teachers. And then there's challenges. We had the tragic loss of a teacher, and a friend, and a colleague, a coach, Chad Fleming, and it took the breath away from us. And then a student, Ryan, 14 years old. When a community goes through loss like that, we really had to seek community help for mental health. My mental health providers needed help, you know? So, it just, in the beginning of the school year, when something like that happens, and it's only a year away from a very tragic accident with four teenage kids, so it's very hard to get through, and we have such a caring community, that you can see that, and it just really, it just really is difficult to get through. But we did it, and we did it together, and that's what I love about this community. So here are some of the Board of Ed budget priorities, we just discussed them, but I know that about what their priorities are, because we have common priorities. Literacy is top priority for elementary and beyond, and if a student can't read by grade three, the research says they're going to have struggles all along the way. I talked to Sue Shinbra, one of our outstanding paraeducators, and we were having stories about that, and knowing kids who she's had to help, and what it means years later, the gratitude that comes from that. Focus on foundational skills, early literacy and numeracy, we've trained a lot of teachers in Wilson, no J.C. notes about it, it's a lot of extra overtime, and, but I'm trying to get our teachers the best training that they can have to reach these kids who need the most help. Focus on accelerated learning, supporting tiered interventionists. Beverly said to tell you that we may be asking for more tutors. I had a DODIA math grant at 1.250, only number nine since I've been here, but DODIA, Department of Defense, shut down their grants this year. I'm hoping next year we can put it in, but it had five math tutors in it. So, we may be looking for additional tutors and interventionists, because those are the people who are helping our kids that need the most help. Investing in the future with our teachers. We had to hire additional special education teacher as a military community, and, you know, I'm the submarine's daughter, so I was in eight schools in 12 years, and they come and they go. But, you know, with that, a lot of times, this is the preferred base, especially for families with children with special needs, because I feel like we do a really good job, and there's a lot of submarines that they can go to, and they can stay more stationed here. So, just really monitoring caseloads and time and that kind of thing, really to make sure we have the staffing we need. And then the response to the town review, and looking at staffing even at central office, although I really feel we have a new finance director, Rita Parsiac, and she's been at Wyndham for decades, and she was at UConn, and she has hit the ground running, and she almost did almost everything that was in the review before, when she got here. So we worked together, and so a lot of things have already been taken care of. And then, you know, you wonder, what does college and career readiness really mean? You think about it to yourself. So, we have improved participation in AP, International Baccalaureate, ECE or Dual Credit, so kids are leaving here with lots of college credit before they graduate, and we've doubled the numbers, every kid is taking the test. Are they all getting 3s through 5s? No, but they're all taking the test, and even taking the coursework in the test matters for them later on. But a lot more are doing really fine, and we've opened the gates so that we don't hold back. If a kid wants to take the course, they can take the course, and we'll support them. PSAT/SATs were really good this past year. Fitch hit it, knocked it out of the park with their improvements, but going back to cultivating those passions and proclivities, what are kids really looking, what are they really good at? What do they love to do? To really find that niche, that thing. And so, I've got Ben here to talk a little bit about the career pathways, and how our magnet schools lead to the middle school and the high school with that. So that's the dream that I'm talking about with the new career pathway, or the addition of robotics to the pathway. A few years ago, we went to EB. Out of that, we really formed this partnership, and we, I think we were here last year with receiving gift from EB on the scoreboards, and if you've been to the softball field or the turf field up at the middle school that everybody uses, you can see the little scoreboards with the submarine. They did ask us to put a submarine on it, and I, how could I say no? So, but that was one of the gifts they've given us. And then this was a really interesting slide, because we, in talking to the partners at EB, you can see that, you can't see at the bottom, but not only EB, but so many of the manufacturers who are around here, you can see that kids out of high school are making between, you know, $23 and $32 an hour. They're getting hard hats at Grosso, when I go to watch them on the stage, and a job. And sometimes these kids didn't know what they wanted to do, and then all of a sudden, they've actually taken a program. We moved the thing, and now it won't move. We solved one problem and...
And then, yes, try now. No, it doesn't. Yep, it's stuck again.
And you can see even the average annual wages are really what our teachers are making after a few years. So, without a high, without a college degree, EB provides superior training, and I know I have a nephew who's been in an internship program, and he's gotten his associate's degree while he's been learning the trades, and he's picked a trade that he really loves. So, for some kids, it's the way to go. And for some families, it also is the way to go, because I don't know, I said, if I had to support my four children going through college now at 50 grand a year, all four, I mean, it's really, it's incredible, but in our, in our community, kids can go to these community colleges free of charge for the first two years, and a lot are opting to that, which shows this slide, which was my, oh. So, in this slide, you can see 24 and 25, and this really comes from a survey, a post-secondary survey of where kids are opting to go. And the four-year college for the classes of 24 and 25, you don't see 80% just going to a four-year college. And this data, we had Sean McEwen, who's in charge of the State of Connecticut Department of Ed CTE programs, and he was saying, this is statewide. A lot of kids are opting more for the two-year college to start with, and then furthering their education or going into industry versus the four-year. We still have about 50%, and this is from a survey, so I don't know how accurate it is, there might be more that we don't know. But there's also, I always say, I'm so proud when I ask my graduates on the graduation day, stand if you're going to serve your country, and you have 30 to 40 kids stand. And that's because we're in Groton, and they've had families who have served, and, you know, whether it's parents, grandparents, or they'll have families who worked at EB. So it's kind of a family tradition. But there are a lot of undecided, about a quarter of our kids just either don't know, or they'll probably enter the workforce somewhere. So if you can get 20, capture 25 kids to get them training in the trades and find the just right job, working with their hands and their minds, that would be a good thing. I'm sorry, Sean, this is just not working for me. Are you sure it's not the clicker, is it the battery?
We didn't move it this time.
I had timed it 15 minutes, what?
It's technology.
It's technology. It works when it wants to.
It doesn't want to work.
Yeah. So this next-generation boat program, Ben, I'm going to have you come up and talk about the elementary version, because we were on CBS News for the boat program at the elementary level. You want to talk a little bit about the boat?
Sure. So we've been partnering with Electric Boat at the elementary level now. This is our fourth year, so they have a program called the Boat for Kids Program, which introduces elementary-age kids to manufacturing jobs in the trades. So whether that's being an electrician, being a shipfitter, being a welder, it incorporates STEM skills, science skills that they're learning in the classroom, but gives them really fun, engaging, hands-on activities where they get to learn about these types of jobs that they might not otherwise know about. We started that program in two of our elementary schools about four years ago, and have been expanding it every year.
And our goal is all five, right?
And our goal is all five, yeah.
We don't want anyone to miss out.
That's right, that's right.
And then the middle school also has a boat program?
So, middle school partnering with EB, they do a program called Sea Perch, which is an undersea robotics program, can be a competitive program for students, but that's new. We had that at the middle school a couple of years ago, went away, but we're super excited to be able to bring that back this year. And it looks like we're going to engage about 120 kids in that Sea Perch program at the middle school. So it's really about building this, this manufacturing pathway all the way through, starting at elementary school, and then, you know, having those rich experiences at high school that can launch them right into, right into career.
And this program really gets them secured. If they really want a job at EB and they take this boat program, we've had a lot of success of those kids going on, and that requires some after-school time as well. So they, they go to Grosso, they go to Westerly, I think, there's other sites, satellite sites, and so when EB approached me, they said, we really want Groton to be the next site, to be able to build this manufacturing center. And, you know, it only makes sense, and I didn't want it going to East Line or Waterford. They were going to come here, my kids. So, and these were two of our graduates, and they're still working there, and they're very successful, and they started with the boat program, and then they got their jobs and their hard hats before they graduated. And so, this is really kind of where you were talking about with the elementary, some of the STEM and CK was our first themed magnet school, it was one of our first magnet schools. Now we have all five.
Yes. Yep, so all five of our elementary schools are themed magnets, some are more STEM-focused, some are more arts-focused, but really kind of in that idea of building that pathway, K through 12, to get kids to figure out the things that they're interested in, the things that they have strengths in, and be able to launch into whatever it is they're going to do after high school. At Catherine Kalnasky, it's a, it's a really nice fit into this dream pathway as part of the magnet program there. All kids take classes in robotics using Legos. I mean, you want to watch some kids have some fun building robots out of Legos, and then learning how to code and program those robots to do different things. Really, really, really fun and engaging, great learning experience for kids. Also, we've been offering engineering, using some curriculum from the Boston Museum of Science. These engineering units connect to the science topics that they're learning about anyway, but just kind of layers on that, that kind of like, that engineering design process that can level up that thinking. Architecture is a big part of this dream pathway, and we've got 3D printing and design, where kids learn how to use some basic CAD software as early as like 4th and 5th grade. So, lots of really, really cool opportunities for kids to figure out what they're, what they're interested in, and what their strengths are. At our other magnet elementaries, we've been expanding these opportunities as well, especially Charles Barnum, Mystic River Magnet, they have some enrichment blocks built into their schedule as part of their magnets, so we've been starting to introduce some of these topics there as well, to really broaden the audience. I've been working in elementary education for, I think, over 20, 20 years now, which is kind of hard to believe and hard to say, but we have a lot of kids that love to build. But we have a lot of kids that love to build and a lot of kids that love to tinker and design and take things apart.
Sounds like the good old days, doesn't it?
Yeah. And, and with this program, we're really trying to, to honor that, you know? We have, we have kids that have these strengths and by honoring those strengths and giving them a pathway to continue to develop those skills, there, there's opportunities now that they can, that they can take part of. So we're really, really excited about that.
Then the middle school has a plethora of project lead, the Wade classes, they certainly have their core and the arts are really big too in this, in this area, in this particular town, so.
Yep. And as I mentioned, we're bringing that Sea Perch program back into the middle school this year. That'll affect about 120 kids in grade six with EB support. And again, just another way for kids to keep building on those, on those engineering and robotic skills.
Well, and we know we have an airport nearby, so I was asked about flight and space and there is something in the middle school, but there could be something also in the high school, especially under that dream umbrella. And then at the high school, robotics is coming, but you can see that we've already got the rest of the dream happening already. This is just going to enhance it even more. And the precision on the machining, getting the machining equipment that EB has promised to help support, pay for, and our robotics team has brought all of their equipment back. And so they're no longer at Pleasant Valley, out in an abandoned building. I've got them home again, jiggety-jig, thank goodness, being the mother that I am and the grandmother. So we're so thrilled and they've set it up beautifully well in the old auto shop. We took a woodworking, it's just a matter of cleaning it up and getting rid of the stuff, right? Just like at home. And then a couple CAD computer labs, so there's like arena of space for this dream. So it's very exciting. Whoops. Well, I think that was just the thank yous. So there, like I said, there's a whole committee, a whole team. EB has been a wonderful partner. They'll train our teachers, they'll help us with some equipment and tools, they'll help us get more Department of Defense grants, so it really shouldn't cost the taxpayer anything. That's my, my mission in life while, while I'm here. And, you know, but it's going to be such an opportunity for our kids. And even at night, like we have an, we have an adult ed program and some of those kids just don't know what they want to do. And so to get them in there and do some machining and have some electric boat mentors there to help and teach, that will be fantastic. So it's going to be not only good for the students who are in our schools, but for the adults who are in our community. So very exciting. Anybody have questions? And I'm sorry, I really timed it for 15 minutes, but my technology was working.
Is the automotive department gone completely now?
It has been gone since I got here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it never, it just became really a garage of stuff that we cleared out. Thank goodness for Sam Kilpatrick and his team, they did a marvelous job. And even the robotics team and the coaches and the mentors really helped pack up and get everything out of Pleasant Valley. We helped them to move some things and they've set it up, it looks beautiful. We had an open house and the kids were so excited. One of my best comments was when I talked to a group of, I talked to all the kids and I said, what do you think if we added robotics and you could learn by day about robotics and machining and then come and do robotics at night? They said, oh, can we do it this year? I said, I think it's going to take me a year. But they were super excited and they said, what a team we could be if we had some of these skills already. And can you imagine what we could do? And that came from kids, not me.
Anyone else? Anyone else online? Oh, Representative Cadden?
Could you speak to the nuance and the need for AP, IB, and ECE? Because I think that comes up in our conversation sometimes.
All I can tell you is that I have almost every kid, sophomore, junior, and senior year, taking these courses. When I first got here, there were those who took them and those who didn't. And I had students who are in more than words and Black Student Union saying, why aren't more kids like me not in these classes? And now they mirror the community and more kids are taking these courses and getting these courses and it gives them a lot of deep thinking, especially with the IB program. There's a lot of critical thinking that you need to use whether you go to college or whether you go into a job. So, you know, it's really, I'm really proud of that, along with the career pathways. I really feel that it really gives kids a balanced education, so. And we're filling the classes mostly. There are some classes that we've had to tweak a little bit or they can't run every time, every semester. Thank you for asking.
Before I recognize second-time hands, is there anyone online that has a question for the superintendent? Is that, I think that's Representative Norman that's on there? We can promote her, please. So we have, we would have 24 members present. Representative Norman, good evening. Did you have a question?
I did.
All right.
As you're talking about expanding this work and, and having it be at the elementary school age, are you doing any work to project forward what kinds of roles in, in this dream piece might be most replaced by AI in the next decade to make sure that we're moving our kids towards jobs that will exist in that time and won't be, you know, taken over by, by machines?
That is an awesome question. I've always felt that need to know ahead. What, what do we have to get our kids prepared for? And it's like you need a crystal ball. But we are, as a district, the board is working on an AI policy and regulations. We have Dr. Clint Kennedy, who's really, his dissertation was around some of this work foregoing. And so we're working really hard to see what we can do to prepare our kids and how we do this in an ethical, responsible matter, so that it's just not lifting work and, you know, producing something that someone else has created. But really looking in the future to see what AI can possibly do. It's a really big topic, so. If I bring community members, I'll call you to help me.
Thank you. Is that all, Representative Norman?
That was it. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the superintendent? Yes, Representative Aubrey.
It's not really-
Could you just use the microphone, please? You don't have to stand, but we'll get that rule out of there next, next term.
Yeah, it's not a question, it's just an encouragement. I still run into the same thing about when I'm introducing people to the area and they're saying, you know, I don't want my kids to go to school in Groton. And so I'm just, and I got to tell you, most of the time, some people will say to me, that's why I want to live in Mystic.
Did you say that's Groton too?
I say to them, that's Groton, honey. But whatever you can, if something good happens, if you can really try to get it out to the public. Because I personally think that your school is as good as the parents' involvement and it goes a long ways when you're part of it. But we've just got to change the image, especially of the high school.
And I just talked to Kim Drellich, who is at the day, and she's been a good friend to Groton Public Schools, and we talked about this project. So as much as I can, I do have a communication coordinator and we try to get out the good news and the things that are happening that are going right. I think there was that CBS special on the boat program that went, you know, out kind of nationally. So there are a lot of good things happening here. My colleagues across the state recognize it. They call me all the time and say, oh my gosh, look at what's happening in Groton. So we do want to get that word out. And I think coming to you at the RTM, I really appreciate it, I always like to be here with you, to let you know, to let the town council know, and of course, the board, to, you know, and our families. So a lot of this work is actually happening. I think there's an expo tonight for eighth graders. So we're really trying to get families out and engaged to see what are the career pathways, what are the kind of courses our kids can take, so at least within here. So how do we then launch and get that out to the larger community? You and I have talked about even doing maybe a coffee clutch at central office with realtors to talk to them about some of the things happening so the other realtors would know.
I'll write it down.
Okay, write it down.
If I write it down, it might happen.
Thank you. I'm sorry it took so long.
No, thank you.
But I appreciate being here.
Again, thank you for, for coming. And again, just to let everybody here in the public know, superintendent's office and central office has been very busy giving us updates. If you haven't gotten the weekly updates, please read them. We also have the arts, the presentation that was presented here. I know that town clerk's office got it, so we'll be putting this as a part of the agenda. So if the public wanted to know any updates on, on behalf of the Groton Public Schools, it's out there and available.
And I do do a school matters newsletter to all our families and get that out there. But anytime I can get the press to listen, I also talk to them.
Thank you, Mo.
All right.
But also the challenges, it's not easy. There's a lot out there that's not easy, but we're, we're doing the best we can.
Indeed. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Always a pleasure. All right, have a great holiday. All right, I'm gonna trim through the fat here and identify that there was only one committee out of the many that we have that met. So I'm going to recognize de facto Chair Norman. If you could present the two items that are going to be on the agenda this evening for our approval, please.
Sure, I think I actually asked, I don't, someone who's actually in the room to come up and present, if that's okay? I think I sent it for one of the reps. Are you able to? Rep Pulaski or Gardner?
Sure.
I sent you all my notes.
I'm gonna- All right, so Rep Pulaski, if you could just come up and present the minutes of the meeting and what we'll do. If you know, like we did in the past, we'll go over the first item first and move that number, then we'll go through the second number, move that number, and then we'll approve the overall minutes.
The meeting was called to order at 6:11 PM. Representatives Dean Shinbrot, Fritchie, Gardner, Norman, and Pulaski were present, so we had a quorum. In new business, our first item was item 2025933-2, the Sutton Park Improvements Additional Funding Resolution. It was read by Rep Gardner, seconded by Rep Pulaski. And Rep Gardner, would you please read it for us?
Okay, resolution authorizing increased funding for improvements at Sutton Park. Whereas the town council and RTM had previously funded improvements at the town's Sutton Park through a combination of grants, Connecticut Bond Fund allocations, ARPA funding, and CIP resources for a total amount of $3,188,071. And whereas the lowest bid received was substantially over the budgeted amount, and whereas town staff worked with the low bidder to make changes to the project that would bring the cost more in line with the budget, and whereas the town council wishes to provide increased funding for removal and replacement of the skate park bowl and to retain the addition of a second basketball court, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes an additional $160,000 from the town's capital reserve fund to the Sutton Park CIP to removal and replacement of the skate park bowl and for the addition of the second basketball court and refer to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Motion was moved by Representative Gardner M., seconded by Representative Pulaski. All right, so we can now discuss it if you want to-
You can now discuss it, yes.
Yes, so if you had any information?
Yes. Director Berry explained that they had cut out things using value engineering. For the skate bar, park, the prob, one problem was they had to fix the bowl because the bowl is too steep and it floods and the skaters couldn't use it and they wanted to repair that, so they couldn't cut that out. It's dangerous and flooded generally. The second thing they wanted to be sure to do was to, given the amount of, of usage of the existing basketball court, they needed to retain the second basketball park back in. They put in a prefab bathroom instead of the more expensive bathroom. They took out a rather decorative pergola kind of entrance. They took out granite curbing and replaced with concrete curbing and did a number of other things. And we, they were asked, do they see additional spendings beyond this 160K? And Director Berry said he hopes and thinks not. So do any of you have any questions about this? We-
Okay, and we do have Director Hanover on the line as well on Zoom and we have Director Berry over there, available for any questions, if you have any. Yes, Representative Fox?
Is that on?
Yes, sir.
I had some concerns about the whole Sutton Park project that we've, that we're approving. The first question I have, is this, is this $160,000, is that a, is that to the, to a, does that go to the Public Works for the, is this a Public Works project or is it a separate project? How's that?
I think Director Berry-
Director Hanover, could you answer that? Is this going to be done in-house by Public Works?
No, this will be done by a low-bid contractor that we're working with to get the price down within the budget. It was designed by Kenton Frost, which is a consultant architect, so that there won't be any in-house contract work or, you know, construction work done in-house. But it will be managed by the Public Works Department.
So does the 160 go to the Public Works or does it go to some other operation?
It'll go into the CIP for this project.
That's under Public Works?
Well, this is, this would be kind of in concert with Parks and Rec as well.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I just, I just wasn't sure how that was working, whether Public Works was building this for us or was managing the project. But it's the Parks Department that is managing this project?
Well, it's Public Works with, with the Parks Department, you know, also managing it.
Okay. Okay, the, the, the bigger concern I have is how the project, how we get into mission creep in these kinds of projects. And I'll, I'll just go over this. I went over it earlier with a few, a few of the members here, but I'll, I'll do this again. In, in 2022, we appropriated a little over a million dollars for the Sutton Park improvements. Then in December 2023, we appropriated about 1.5 million additional dollars to, to get this project completed. And we were, we were told at that time that, that this was needed immediately because there was concerns about inflation and the cost of cement going up and it was approved so that, so they could get started. And I, and I understand that the project hasn't really started yet and we're, you know, two years beyond where, where this money was appropriated to get it started right away. I, I'm not, I, my numbers might not be fully correct, but it looks like in October, November 24, we appropriated another $1.7 million for this project. And, and we can check those figures. But in addition to that, then I've, there was discussion later about $90,000 going to be needed for trees, $657,000 needed for a playground, $260,000 for a basketball court, and $259,000 for, for a pavilion. I understand that some of that has been reincorporated into the new project plan that, that wasn't just negotiated and that some cuts have been made. And so that the, the project that I hear now is, is we're talking about 3.18 or 3.2 million dollars for this project. My figures, if my figures are correct, it was 5.4 million. But the point of this is that, is that when we start a project like this and we come to the RTM and where we have to approve the funds and the project, if we are given a project that we think is going to cost a million dollars and then it turns out that the project is going to cost three to five mil- is gonna cost three to five million dollars, it's very hard for us to, to figure out what that's gonna be. And, and in this project, I think it's, I think it's a good project. I'm not arguing that we shouldn't be doing this. I'm just, the process that we used to get the funding for this, I think we need to tighten up in the future. And so for future projects, when we, when we are projecting something like this, as a member of the RTM, I'd fully appreciate having, having the project fully visualized and, and the budget for it established upfront, so that we don't keep coming in at the end of each year and over a several-year period, increasing the price of the project. That's, that's my comment here. I'm, I'm supportive of this project. I'm gonna vote for it. But in the future, I just, I'd like to make the point that we need to, we need to have better control of, of the planning for projects like this. Thank you.
I'll get that. Mr. Barry, I just, I'm gonna kinda chime in off of what Representative Fox had, and you might be able to give us some, a little bit more detail on that. But I could remember as a member in a few years back, where this was almost like a step-by-step authorization for this Sutton project rebuild. I know what happened at the Town Council. Am I mistaken on that? Where we, the beginning of it came from ARPA dollars, and then from that point, we started looking at other revenue sources, whether it was the bonding or the CIPs, the Capital Reserve Fund to do that?
That is correct. As this project developed, we looked at whatever funding opportunities were available. As it's mentioned here in the referral, you know, we've received grant money, bond money from the state, utilized funds from the town's Capital Reserve. And as we got into more detail of this project, and just the very nature of construction, the longer it takes to get a project shovel-ready, the prices, you know, continue to, to increase. And, you know, I'm thankful that the Town Council and the RTM has been very supportive of this project. I, I think it's, when it's done, I think we're gonna see a transformational change to Sutton Park that will benefit a wide variety of users. I certainly don't like coming back and asking for more money. And, but again, I appreciate the support that we've had to date, and I, we are, we've already taken steps to drive the costs down. And at this point, feel very comfortable working with the contractor that we're working with. He's been very, they've been very understanding and have worked with us to make, you know, the necessary changes so that our budget aligns with their projected costs. That we won't have to come back and, and ask for additional money.
Representative Massett?
I, I just have a question about Capital Reserve Funds. And I may have it wrong. Now, Capital Reserve Funds are funds that are left over from other projects that go into a fund after so many years. They go into a fund that can be used. Am I correct, or am I way off base?
I, I can be honest with you here, Representative Massett. I don't know the answer to that question, but I'd be happy to forward that if our directors don't, aren't able to answer that. I can talk to Town Manager Bert.
That's fine. If I could get an answer to that at some point, I would be very happy. Thank you.
To my understanding, Director Barry, I mean, all the money that we are allocating out for Capital Reserve, we approve at our budget meetings. And if there is, you know, if we end up coming in under budget on a capital project, it will go back into that fund, just similar to if, if we had money from any of the departments that are here this evening, they, they were under budget, which is what we love to see every, every budget cycle, would get, go and, go and get put back in the general fund, if I'm not mistaken. But I will circle back with the Town Manager and get that answer.
I, I did speak with Town Manager Bert this afternoon, and, cause I anticipated one of the questions would be, well, how much money is, is in the town's Capital Reserve Fund? And he said, at this time, there's about $2 million. So there's money in there to cover this additional request.
Okay.
And he did, he did anticipate money coming from the state in this upcoming budget cycle that would either, that would further expand or increase the Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay. Is there any other? Yes, Representative O'Bree.
Yes, I was wondering, I'm belaboring it a little bit, and probably, if anybody agrees with me, I'll probably extend it a little bit. But I think it might be appropriate to have an accounting of exactly what has been appropriated for it, and also what has begun or what has been done or anything to encourage us to wanna do more. Because I don't think at this point, we've done anything over there, and this is something that money has been put aside for, for a good, a good period of time. I know there's time between getting the money and getting it going, but I, I think we really need more information. I do. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but I feel that we need to know. How much money have we set aside? What is that money exactly for? When do you anticipate that it might begin and might be done? I, I would not be comfortable to go forward and recommend this.
Representative O'Bree, what we have now is there is an allocation of $3,188,071. That's what's been approved by the Town Council and ourselves over the years. They're asking for another 160,000, so we would just add that to the number. But I, I do agree with your comments, and I've already communicated to the Town Manager to see if we can get some sort of breakout of where the money's coming from and what revenue sources, so that we get a clearer picture on how this project's being funded. Go ahead.
Well, I believe your final number, when you were talking earlier, was more money than what...
My, my figure, and again, it was, a lot of it was, was renegotiated in this last contract. But if you take everything that has been talked about in the RTM meetings, and you say that all that money went in, we'd be talking about $5,410,000. That's not a correct number because it's been, it's been adjusted. But those are the, to your point is, it's not clear where, what's coming and going in this. And, and I, and I'd like, I'd like the answer to your question as well. It would be very helpful just to have a better understanding of, of where we are in this particular project.
I'll just let you know, I, I'm not gonna get this answer for you this evening from the Town Manager, because they're at the Town Council Committee of the whole. So I apologize for not getting this ahead of time, but I'll be happy to send it along for our next meeting in December. Yes, Representative Pulaski?
My understanding was that if you get this 160,000, are we ready to start work now? No work, to my understanding, has yet begun. But if you get the 160,000, can we begin?
That would get us closer. With the 160,000, we'll be able to move forward with the project. We have not signed an agreement yet with the contractor because they're waiting for the results of this evening's meeting. Because if the 160,000 is not appropriated tonight, that would change the scope of the project. The contract that we have would have to be adjusted to reflect the, the actual numbers that have been approved and the scope of the work. And, and then, once that was signed, they could be, they were actually hoping to be able to begin this month, but that is probably not likely. Because once the contract's signed, they have to submit all their insurance. They have to meet the town's insurance requirements and things like that.
So what is, if we gave you the money tonight, what is your estimate of the first month that we might see work begin at Sutton Park?
I would expect probably January.
Okay.
Yeah. They would like to get started on this project as soon as possible. And I don't know if Director Hanover's still on the, on the call. I don't know, Greg, does January sound like a reasonable start time?
Yeah, that would be, that would be a reasonable timeframe, you know, obviously weather-dependent.
Right.
Weather-dependent, and we also have the holidays coming up, so I can see where that might be a bit of a hang-up as well. Before I recognize second-time hands, Representative
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a couple of questions. So Director Barry, for the hundred-plus-thousand dollars, what, I'm trying to wrap my head around what particularly would change in a scope if not approved? Cause it's not a whole lot of money, so I'm wondering what that hundred and whatever thousand was paying for. Would you go into the next question, if it's not approved, do you have an idea of how the scope would change?
Sure. If the, if the request, this evening's request was not approved, there would essentially be a hole in the middle of the skate park, which is where the bowl is now, that skaters don't use. Because it just wasn't designed properly. It, it acts more like a pool than a bowl, and the skaters don't use it. So the concept that has, the design concept for the skate park is to create, to utilize an area that skaters can flow from one section to another. So without this, without the money for, to make the necessary renovations to the bowl so that it flows, there will be the section of the skate park that skaters will avoid, which they do right now. They don't use it because they can't skate in it. So that would be the void if, if the 160,000 was not, that's one part of what would be, would not be done. The second part is putting in a second basketball court. There's a basketball, a single basketball court there. Now, there's a desire to put a second basketball court in. So if the 160,000 wasn't approved, the second basketball court wouldn't happen, and the renovations to the bowl to make it fill and fit in with all of the other changes that are taking place would not happen.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask one more question?
You have the floor, sir.
So the, what you just described, were these identified in the original scope, or do they go to what the other representative was alluding to, was creep within the project as we entered into the park?
No, Renner, the original plan was to make complete renovations to the skate park, which included making renovations to the bowl. When we got the quotes back and the quote was higher than what we had budgeted, we started looking at, they started value engineering. So they looked at what could, what would be cut out, what would provide the greatest amount of savings in order for us to get to where our budget reached the projected cost of the project. And so one of the things that they decided to take, to leave out was the bowl. When the presentation was made to the council, the council said, no, we really feel like when the skaters came to us four years ago and said, look, it's time the community kind of reinvested in the skate park, they've, the council was like, yes, that was our commitment to them, and we wanna see the entire skate park renovated and not left with this hole in the middle where skaters wouldn't, wouldn't utilize. So I, I really wouldn't call that creep. And, and the same with the second basketball court. That basketball court has been in the plans from the beginning, and the council wanted to see that second basketball court remain. So it's not like we're, we're adding things like, oh, this would be nice to add. We're actually been going in the other direction and like, yeah, unfortunately, we'd like to have this, but we're, we're taking this out of the project so that, again, we can align our budget with the projected costs from the contractor.
Thank you. I understand and feel your pain. I just needed to ask. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not inner, I'm not doom-scrolling here. I'm just trying to get some information for you guys. Wally, I recognize Representative Gardner A. I'm gonna keep searching for some of these numbers that we're looking for, okay? You have the floor, yes.
I just wanna say, you know, I fully support the 160,000. You know, we wanna invest in our kids to have a space to skate. I know a lot of kids have been waiting for a long time for this. And I understand, you know, the bowl, my nephew rides the skate park, and the bowl is an issue. I really feel like, let's, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. We've invested quite a bit of money into this, so another 160,000, which we have available. So I fully support this, and I hope other folks do too.
Thank you. Trying to walk and chew gum here. So in 2024, October 24th, Parks and Rec, there was a Sutton Park reservation, renovations discussion. The town approved $1,50,000 in fiscal year 2022 budget to make reservations to Sutton Park, including the skate park, playground landscaping redesign, and repaving of the lot. The town appro, the town appropriated an additional 1.468366. So that's $1,468,366. $135,000 came from low SIP funds, and $1,333,366 came from capital improvement projects fund balance to renovate Sections 1 and A1 of the skate park. The projected cost in the project exceeds what was budgeted, and that's why we're here where we are today. And what I can do is I can share this for you. I was trying to look back at our meeting minutes from November of 2024 to try to get that information, so we can go back. So if anybody who's in this body right now wants to take a look back at the meeting minutes, you can go back on the Town of Groton website, meeting calendar, and then go back to our November meeting where we had this, this item on our agenda. All right? And that's what I was trying to work on right now. Okay?
And some of the other funding, we received a community connectivity grant for, I believe it was $344,000, and that's to build a multi-use path that would connect from the existing multi-use path on Route 1, go through the park, and connect to Midway Circle. So that would be a multi-use path for people to walk and bike, creating almost an entire loop from Depot Road all the way around. We also received, I think it was $175,000 from the Connecticut Bonds. So those are some of the other funding sources that have helped pay for, or fund this project.
Excuse me?
You're excused.
I'm going home. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. There's no other hands up, so I'll accept third-time hands.
If anybody else wants to have a first term, I'll, I'll wait. Okay. It probably seems like a very...
Just can you use the microphone, please, Representative O'Bree, so we can all hear you?
Sing along with me. Okay. We, you need 160,000 right now for the project that this gentleman's ready to start. Is that correct? That is correct. In order to do the bowl and the second basketball court.
Right. So, and we have over $2 million, maybe close to $3 million in funds already for Sutton Park. Why would we appropriate more?
We need the additional $160,000 in order to, to do the bowl and the second basketball court.
I, I understand that, but none of the other parts of it are being done, correct? Right now?
No, the, the work on this has not started.
Okay. So my question is, why cannot the money that's already been appropriated for that park be used for this one that's ready to move? be used for this one that's ready to move forward? Why are we appropriating more money?
Because we.
Well, if the project moves forward with the money that we have right now, the renovations to the bowl will not take place, and there will not be a second basketball court.
That doesn't make any sense. Excuse me, to me it doesn't.
There's no contract yet.
Yeah, there's no contract, so the way that the, there's no contract. So if we decided to say, we're not voting for this, we're gonna be less a hundred and sixty thousand dollars after the town directors had come together to try to come up with some adjustments based on the low bid, which was higher than what was budgeted for. So we can get everything else done except what Director Barry has been saying, which is the completion of the bowl and the addition of that other basketball court.
I think the question I need to ask then, and I apologize, I'm laboring this, but I think it's questions that other people have. Let's, these other appropriations that were made for the park, were they for specific items?
Yes.
So that's why we can't use those monies, because that money needs to be used for what it was specified for?
Right, like the community connectivity grant, that's specific to the multi-use path. The bond, some of the bond fund money is specific to the bathroom. So it can't, you know, we cannot decide to not do the multi-use path, because if we choose not to use the multi-use path, we lose that three hundred and forty four thousand dollars. If we decide not to do a bathroom, we, in order to pay for something else, we lose, we can't use that money for something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would, but I still would ask that maybe sometime in a future meeting that we maybe go back to looking at the original project, because it has been a long time since we looked at it and talked about what we hope to do there. And maybe it would make it a lot easier for all of us to grasp where we are.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for being patient.
Before I recognize you, Representative Massett, I've dug into the old logbook here. Wednesday, November 13th, 2024. What day is it today? It's pretty close, right? All right, so a year, just about a year ago today, we had item 2024-877 Sutton Park renovations. We voted twenty seven in favor, one opposed. Then I looked at the package of information that was given in our agenda for that night's meeting, and it has a background and history in here, so I would recommend everybody take a look if they're having questions on what was allocated. One of the things that we did was item 2024, on that same meeting night, was 2024-921 American Rescue Plan Act funds reallocation, which was, part of Sutton Park was reallocated for ARPA funds, Town Groton Assistance Program, and Human Services. We had reallocated some of those funds that we had already approved to different revenue streams. The ARPA funds were roughly about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that revitalization project just on ARPA alone. And we added the two hundred and forty two thousand, two hundred and forty six dollars for that. And if you go further down in our RTM discussion for action, and I agree with Representative Fox, in 2022, we approved one thousand fifty, one million fifty thousand dollars. And the town appropriated the additional funds that I had mentioned earlier, one million four six eight three six six, some coming from LoSip, and the one point three three three, three six six from capital improvement projects. And again, all of these things that were listed were fitness stations, grill stations, basketball court, entry wall and sign, playground, playground seating area, public art, site furnishings, shade trees, skate park pavilions, which again, as discussed by our de facto chair right now, has been adjusted due to the high bid from the low, higher bid than what we were anticipating from the low bid. I hope that answers some questions.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Yes, sir.
One question, what is the total, what is the bid number? The low bid?
The low bid is still being adjusted based on the work. I don't have the low bid, what the original low bid number was. That has changed now because we have taken out a number of different pieces or changed the construction, how different things were going to be constructed. So the lowest bid, the lowest bid continues to drop, and right now, we're trying to fill that gap with this a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So the estimate that I could give you right now, Representative Casper, is the three million one eighty eight zero seven one plus the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we could approve this evening. And that would be a total of three million three hundred and forty eight thousand seventy one dollars.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Any other first time hands before I recognize second time hands? All right, Representative Massett?
I have a two-part question. I don't know much about skateboarding, but it seems to me that the bowl is an integral part of the skate park. That's like what they, that's what they use the most. My question is, because the bowl, the skate park, why now are, is everything white that the skateboarders don't use it because it floods? That should have been like a number one that was included. And my question is, why now? Is it such a mess?
All right, Representative Massett, I gotta apologize, you were garbled in that, but I was trying to decipher what you were talking about. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but what I was hearing was that why wasn't the bowl situation in the skate park addressed prior?
Yes.
Okay.
Immediately, when they were talking about the project, to begin with.
So I guess the question is, is how did we not find out? How did we find out so late that the bowl needed to get replaced? Or instead of, in the current situation and what it's formed as, which is puddling and they're not actually utilizing it? Was it, did it have something to do with, I'm just throwing, adding on to the question, were we asking skateboarders when we're looking at this project, hey, this we never use? The best way and the best shape for this is to deepen the bowl? Does that make sense, Representative Massett?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have worked extensively with the skateboarders to develop a concept that they're all very comfortable with and feel like will provide the best value to them or the best experience to them. It's been long recognized that the bowl needed to be fixed. It wasn't, you know, we got to the end and all of a sudden we were like, oh geez, we need to fix the bowl. We've known the bowl needed to be fixed for a long time.
And so what you're saying is, is that when the low bid came in, part of the project was already to fix the bowl, but the cost based on the town's budget for the project didn't meet the low bid?
Right. Because the bowl was not properly designed and constructed whenever it was done. What needs to happen is that the bowl is too deep now. It needs to be almost flattened and raised up, so there's a considerable amount of money that needs to go into a relatively small amount of space. But again, if, if we don't fix that bowl, the skaters will continue to not use it. It will continue to collect water, and it will not be in sync with, with all the other changes that are taking place within the, within the skate park.
Because what you're telling us now, the skate park's getting improved, but without this money, the bowl will not be improved with it. So we'll be putting a big, there'd be a big like Band-Aid in the middle of.
Yeah.
The healed wound.
This kind of black hole that, yeah.
All right. Before I get additional, is there any other first time speakers that wish to speak on this motion on the floor? All right, Representative Fritchie?
I major in, unfortunately, economics, the bane of my existence. And I can sit there and watch as this happens, and I, and I look at our, the economics of our town and saying, all right, we're, we're in a nono land right now with what's going on in Washington and what's going on everywhere. How can we make incredible expenses under the circumstances? There's a lot of doubt. So I, I look at this, and now we've approved fifteen million dollars for a new stadium, right? And if the same thing happens to that, that happened here, you're talking about a forty some odd million dollar expense, all based on current data, giving us one number, and then reality giving us a different number. But this is not the time to play with money. That's my opinion economically. It really is not with everything going on right now. There's states all over the country that are suffering all kinds of deficits that they can't afford to make up, and we don't know how that's gonna end. And until we do, I'm not sure we should be investing heavily. I think the important thing is to keep our people working, keeping the main system that we have going, working, and, and just take, just watch it until we know for sure what's going to happen one way or another. We are in a good position compared to a lot of communities in Connecticut, let alone across the country. But I wouldn't, I have no confidence about where we're gonna end up. And I keep read incessantly about what damages being done here, there, and everywhere, and I'm not sure how this is gonna work out. So I don't think we should commit to anything right now. That's my personal opinion, and I also think we should, as a town, be looking at trying to maintain like a three percent increase, just covering our existing expenses and, and stay that way. And when we get some freedom to make real decisions, then we can do that. That's my opinion. I wanted to say it so everybody could hear it, but I, I don't know what the solution is. So it's up to you.
Thank you. I just did quick numbers, and again, I'm not injecting my opinion on this. I'm just giving you statistics out of the numbers that have already been allocated of three million one hundred and eighty eight thousand seventy one dollars. And this piece of a hundred and sixty thousand, that equates to about five percent of the total project that we've already expended. I know, at least from my past of being here on several occasions and several terms, when capital improvement projects don't get completed, you can always add on three to six percent in the next year moving forward. And again, I agree with you completely, Representative Fritchie. The unknown in the world, in the nation, in the state is unknown, but we do know that costs are going up. And if, for some reason, this group decides to delay it, this cost will go up some more.
Yep. May I add that those costs going up requires increases in the ability to fund the town's expenses. And what they're seeing all over the place is a lot of people are just dropping out of jobs, excuse me, and their, the ability to create the revenue to cover these increased expenses is getting doubtful, if not, so I go back to the basic thing. Let's at least say what our basis is that keeps us going in our current state as well as we can. I don't want to see us go backwards, but I, I don't want to make it at the expense of the expenses that people don't have to pay, have the money to pay. And that's part of the town's mill rate and so forth. So you guys have a very tough thing. This is my last opinion here is on the RTM. And you guys have a tough thing going forward, but I would not assume that things are normal now. They are not. I can tell you that economically. And it is a very, very, very questionable world right now, what we've got going.
Understood. Representative Gardner A., I did see your hand up, but we have someone on the big screen here. That is a first time hand, so then I'll represent, I'll go back to you. Representative Dutton, aloha. It's all sunny over there. What's going on?
Well, it's nine thirty in the morning tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And it's, I do look forward to seeing everybody in person next month. Very quickly, I actually have to go to work now, and I, I do support, I recognize everybody's opinions, comments, interjections about the need for being cautious, especially at this moment. I also would say, as a teacher myself, getting kids outside and wanting them to be in a park is vital. And so I do support, I need to leave, and if there's a vote, I support this measure to add a hundred and sixty thousand. Thank you.
That was Representative Dutton on there, Representative Fritchie. Representative Gardner A.? No, okay. Representative Gardner M.?
Thank you, moderator. I think, I appreciate what everybody's saying here tonight, and I agree, the world looks a little scary right now, and prices are going up, but I think it's more of a risk to allow our town to fall into disrepair because we're afraid to spend the money. The three million one hundred and eighty eight thousand seventy one dollars has already been allocated. There are grants, bonds, ARPA. That's gonna happen. If we want to do this right, and we want to keep big businesses here, and we want to keep attracting, you know, good people who pay taxes and their children, and keep our children, you know, off the streets in a bad way and in the parks in a good way, then I, you know, that's why I'm supporting this hundred and sixty thousand, which is not a lot of money. We have plenty of money in the town capital reserve at the moment, with more coming, according to Town Manager Bert, to pay this. I don't think there's been any incompetencies here. I think if you're surprised that the prices went up this much, you haven't been watching the news. So I don't think there are any surprises here. I don't think there's incompetence. I don't think anyone's doing anything shady. And I think the three million one hundred eighty eight thousand number is right, not the five million number. And I will be supporting a hundred and sixty thousand for all those reasons.
Thank you. Any other first time hands before I recognize second time hands? All right, Representative Norris, you have the floor.
I would like to say, being in the project management world, anything that was priced a year ago, a year and a half ago, it doesn't even hold water today of the cost, the rising cost for construction. I would also say, looking at this project, in particular the bowl, I don't see that as an enhancement to this project. It's actually a repair. It's something that we already have that is in need of repair so kids can use it. And if we do not repair it, it will become a major eyesore at that park facility. It'll become a pond, it'll become a mosquito heaven, and before you know it, we'll be having the same conversation a year from now, maybe two years from now. So I'm in favor of getting this done.
All right. Representative Casper?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also am in favor of this. I don't believe that the five percent save calculation I did mentally over what we looked at a year ago is out of, out of line. The part I have trouble understanding is why the bowl isn't included, because what goes to skate park if you can't skate? And that should have been one, not one of the items that was gonna be cut out, in my opinion, but I am in favor of it. my opinion, but I am in favor of it.
Director Barry, I don't believe it was ever cut out. It was just that, it was identified that that specific part of the skate park needed additional, and I'll use Representative Norris's terms, repair in order to make it adequate enough for usage by the skate park in general.
Yeah, I think Representative Norris's description as a repair versus an enhancement is correct. I mean, we recognize that the bowl needed work and our plan right from the beginning has to, has been to make those necessary repairs to that bowl so that it fits in with all the other work that was being done at the skate park.
All right. Anything else on this agenda item? Yes?
Well, I sort of started this. I want to speak in favor of it for all the reasons other people have mentioned, but also the fact that given the nature of getting money in our current bad world, this, this project is being funded a great deal with other people's money. If we try to make this repair again later, we will not be getting any of other people's money. And I think we ought to, we have a contractor as a low bid who actually worked with us extensively to get the price down, to be in line with current realities. I think we might be at risk of losing that contractor if we don't give them the money now. For all those reasons, I will vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Any other comments on the main motion on the floor? All right, see you none. I'll call, I'll call for a vote on item 2025-933, Sutton Park Improvements Additional Funding Resolution. The amount on the floor is $160,000 that is coming out of the town's capital reserve fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no and raise your hand. Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Did we lose, we lost?
We lost two, so we're at 22.
Okay, so we're at 22. So it's 22 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, Director Hanover. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Director Barry, appreciate it. All right, one more on the docket here.
We have one more. This is item 2025-937-2, Nature Everywhere Grant Resolution. Representative Pulaski moved to accept and Representative Gardner seconded. Representative Gardner, could you read this one too?
Sure.
This keeps me from.
Yep, that's fine. Resolution authorizing, applying and accepting the Nature Everywhere Communities Catalytic Grant, whereas Groton Public Schools have been jointly participating with the town's Department of Parks and Recreation and the town's Office of Planning and Development Services in the Go or Get Outdoors Groton Initiative. And whereas the Nature Everywhere Communities Catalytic Grant would help ensure equitable ongoing access to nature for children and youth across town. And whereas the grant would be used to purchase and install nature-based playground equipment at the elementary schools, provide outdoor learning experiences for students, and incorporate nature-based activities and lessons into the school day. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the Groton Public Schools' Board of Education to apply for and accept a grant for $50,000 for the Nature Everywhere Communities Catalytic Grant and to refer the item to the RTM per rules 6.5.3. So moved.
Seconded.
Watson's seconded.
Apologies, I was multitasking. Motion was moved by?
Gardner.
Gardner, seconded by Pulaski. All right, I remember that one. All right, the item is 2025-937. The amount is for $50,000. I open up the floor for discussion. Could you give us the minutes?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
The project was spoken to by the superintendent of schools and the K through five STEM leader. This grant is connected to an organization called the Children in Nature Network and the GO, Go Outdoors Groton Collaborative, which stands for Get Outdoors Groton. This network gave them access to grant funding. Round one grant was for Parks and Rec and was used for a youth organizer, was used for youth organizers and interns and for outreach and learning about how to get kids excited about being outdoors. With those learning, we applied for a competitive grant, which is this one for nature-based play equipment, and we will continue to build up outdoor learning infrastructure. What kind of lessons can you take outdoors? They're super excited about this grant and ready to get started. There are no matching funds required. And there was a question about what is nature-based play equipment? And it can be used with natural substances or tree stumps or features such as an obstacle horse. One of the things they wanted to do with this grant particularly is have a nature trail at all of the elementary schools and the middle school. Right now, there's I guess just one nature trail involved. They've been working with GOSA and they're very happy with what they've done with GOSA. And everyone who spoke about it in the finance committee felt that the, it was a good thing to get kids outdoor more. So it passed, this passed 5 to 0.
Okay, all right. Thank you for those minutes. Is there any discussion on the main motion on the floor? And again, this isn't, this is a grant, so.
Yes.
F R E E, all right? Let's remember that, folks. All right. Any other discussion? All right, see you none. Item 2025-937, Nature Everywhere Grant Resolution. The amount of the grant is $50,000. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, 22, 0 to 0. Thank you so much. If we can just get you to.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Correct.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
All right, motion was moved by Pulaski, seconded by Dean Shinbrot. Any discussion on approval of the minutes or acceptance of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, de facto Chair Pulaski, and we appreciate your service. All right, thank you so much. All right, keep digging. There's a couch cushion somewhere. We need, we need to find more. All right, I can, I don't like to assume, but I can assume that the rest of the committees did not have any meetings or reports. All right, sounds great. No assumptions here. Liaison report. Do we have any liaison reports? Rep. Obray, anything from economic development?
Let me think for just a second.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Representative Wells then. He's always got something on the, on the back nine over there. Let us know what's happening. Did they, they didn't have a meeting yet, did they?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
I mean, they did, but no quorum.
No quorum, okay, understood. But if you want to give a synopsis or, you know, something that.
They do have the money.
Oh, we've got money now?
Money.
Oh.
The first quarter receipts are from, that would be July, August, September, are 24% higher than the last, yeah, last year. And 22% higher than the prior four-year average.
Very good.
So the course is raking in money.
That sounds great to me.
There's an issue with the software that they're using for booking and they're working it out with the vendor. I don't think it involves extra costs. It's just a question of peculiarities of how they play golf.
Okay.
And getting it to fit. So that's it. Maybe we'll have a quorum next meeting.
Fingers crossed. It's Thanksgiving season.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
My pleasure. Yes, Representative Obray?
I only put my head down to look at my notes. I did want to tell you.
If you could just have the microphone a little closer to you, please?
I just wanted to say that Ben, Ben Marcy ran the last rec meeting and it was, it was an excellent meeting, except that the committee itself feels there's been some lack of communication. So they're going to be requesting a meeting and having a few other people there for questions that they may have. So when they do that meeting, it'll probably be very interesting and might be good to follow. That was about the main part of it, but I did think that Ben did a really nice job with the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else on liaison reports? Okay, budget discussions, anything on budget, budget, budget. I believe they're already crunching the numbers. So if you have any questions, if you're reviewing your previous budget book and there's something that pops in your head, you could either relay that message to myself, town clerk, or the town manager, and then we could try to get that resolved for you as soon as possible. Any other budget discussion? All right, there's other business. Again, I had mentioned the calling hours of the Celebration of Life service for our former rep Archie Swindell that's going to be at Groton Congregational Church on Saturday from 3 to 6. We have something else that's coming up here on the 15th, I believe. Isn't there a Groton Open House here? I had it in my other note section. I can't find it now. I believe that there's a, there's, it's going to be here on the 15th, November 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30. So it's an open house discussion about the future plans. There's a, they're implementing a plan on Groton 2035. So it's again, a long-term plan that they're looking into. So if anybody's interested, you know, the community members that are interested in coming, it's going to be here. Nobody knows except me, right? And now, of course, I had a note and I got rid of it, so that's not helpful. But I believe it's on the website as well. So if you want to take a look at the website, and I believe it's on Facebook, there's a QR scanner, you can take a look at it. You know, the more people that are involved and engage in this process, if you plan on being here until 2035 like myself, show up and have your voice heard, Groton. Thank you. Representative Obray, yes?
I was just going to mention, I'm sure everybody in here has said, how many more car washes are we going to have? So this is the time that you can go to these meetings and put in your input on some changes in our zoning. So think about it. It's very important because otherwise we're going to get more car washes.
All right, I found it. I apologize for the incorrect date. It's, it's Groton 35 Open House. It's here at Thrive 55. It is on Wednesday, November 19th. I apologize for the mistake. 5:30 to 7:30 PM here. Again, this is a chance at this event to share your ideas on Groton's future, offer feedback on prospective strategies and policies from all the six P O C D chapters, contribute input for the climate-ready Groton Plan, and voice your concern if you don't want any more car washes. Food will be provided. And again, if you wanted more information, you can always go on the website and check on Towne and Groton website on the events calendar. Okay? Any other business? Before I call for an adjournment, I'd like to say it was a pleasure working with all of you here and on Zoom. Our town clerk and assistant town clerk, Sean Greeley, our tech master over there. I'll be looking forward to seeing you next month. And for some, thank you so much for serving and moving on to further ventures in the higher office. And I hope you enjoyed the ride as much as I did. All right. Yes, sir, Representative Casper?
Yeah, on that same note, I'd like to give everyone a hand for their service. Over the 10 years that I've been on the RTM, I've found it to be rewarding. I found out how good a town is. The staff we have, we're lucky to have. And I think the town is lucky to have all you and keep up the good work.
Thank you to everyone. All right, and our next meeting is going to be for the new term. That's going to be on December 10th, on Wednesday, second Wednesday. So if you're, if you've been reelected, congratulations. You're stuck with us for two more years, all right? And it's going to be a great ride, I guarantee it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion was moved by someone, seconded by someone else, Adams and then Dean Shinbrot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, everybody have a great Thanksgiving.